Good morning. I'll call the meeting to order at 9:30. I'm wondering if there are any additions to the agenda this morning? There being none, is could I call for a motion to approve the agenda as circulated? Thank you. Councilor Keller, are all in favor? We move then to the 4.1, Public Transportation Request for Decision. I'll defer to you. See you.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Waxer. Council, in front of you, can you see a recommendation that has two parts? First, that the Committee Director Administration finalize a memorandum of understanding with Parks Canada for the provision of public transportation services and return to the future committee meeting, and that Committee Director Administration issue an RFP for public transportation system feasibility study. The report comes from a number of different town planning documents that all point in the same direction, the perspective of public transportation and essentially transit. I'll use those terms that may be interchangeably. But I do, I think, prefer public transportation because transit, I think, leads to a certain idea of big buses driving around town, and in Jasper's context, that may or may not be appropriate. So we want to leave our options as widely open as possible. So the 2011 Community Sustainability Plan includes recommendations about exploring the opportunity for future internal and regional transit connections for the town. The municipality's 2018 Transportation Master Plan has an objective to identify options for transit service within and to Jasper through partnerships. And more recently, in response to COVID-19 pandemic, the Economic Recovery Task Force issued a recommendation that Jasper explore destination-wide transportation strategy to encourage both active transportation and non-personal automobile movements within the townsite and to from other high-volume destinations in the region. So all of these background items really led to and supported last summer's pilot project, where the municipality supported a private proposal for a pilot project of transportation service around the townsite and some of the destinations within the national park. That project ran from July 15th to September 26th with a relatively limited route, but did include high-profile stops at Whistler, Wapping Camper Ground, the bus zone on the 600 block of Patricia, as well as Lake Mat and the Jasper Port Lodge. The service did see strong average daily ridership that actually did grow over the entire course of the pilot project. July, there was just over 20 riders per day. August, 48, nearly 49 riders per day. And in September, actually, the highest daily ridership of 49 riders per day. So that was a successful pilot project, approved that the visitors and the public would use that service if it did exist. And based on that success, administration proactively applied for a planning grant under the Federal Rural Transit Solutions Fund program. So there are two, as I've mentioned before, there are two parts to this recommendation, really setting the stage for how could we increase the mobility options available to Jasper residents for non-personal automobile? And obviously, those would be able to support visitors as well. The first is a discussion between the municipality and parks. Any transportation service, I think, by Jasper's unique context, would have to cross this intergovernmental boundary from the townsite out into the national park. And when a service is using national park states, then Parks Canada requires some kind of agreement between the service provider to use that public grant. The initial discussion that administration had about the future of transportation was that Parks was considering issuing an RFP or request for proposals for a service provider to go into the park, and they would have managed that process. In discussion with Parks, we identified that it may be more flexible for the municipality to be the one that delivers the service into the park, and the park can partner with another governmental entity much easier than the private entity. So the intent of the memorandum of understanding is to set the stage for that, for the municipality to essentially MOU to deliver a transportation service out to stops in the national park. The style of delivery of the service is not decided. So to be clear, when I say the municipality delivering the service does not necessarily mean the municipality with municipal staff. It could be contracted partners, it could be private partnership. All of those options are still available. But essentially, the agreement, the MOU, conceptually would be the agreement between Parks Canada to allow the municipality to deliver that service out and have stops in the park. Administration is recommending that the committee advance this concept by giving us direction to work with Parks to complete an MOU and bring a draft document back to use, so you can review that before finally recommending for approval. The second portion of this report focuses on a feasibility study. So if we first secure who's allowed to deliver the service where, the second part would be what kind of service should we deliver? And that's really what the feasibility study is focused on. As I mentioned, the administration had applied for a grant. We were successful in securing $50,000 from the Rural Transit Solutions Fund. The municipality will be required to contribute a minimum additional $10,000 towards the project. And the intent of the feasibility study is really to conduct analysis of our current state of public transportation in Jasper, which might seem a little bit counterintuitive, since there sort of isn't necessarily what we think of as a traditional public transportation. But we do want to understand what the demand is based on the pilot projects and other types of services that are in town, the provision of transportation today, how it exists today, what perceptions are of the public, and what potential barriers might be. We'd also like to review existing public transportation solutions in similar mountain communities that also have economies driven by tourism, because as we can appreciate, there's a new context there that would be important to recognize. We'd also like to identify potential partners. We certainly see that there is a great opportunity to partner with industry in any sort of public transportation system or solution. And then finally, the feasibility study would provide recommendations, including routes, fares, operating hours, capital plan and operating forecast. So really, that would be our plan of informed future operating decisions, capital decisions that would all come to council. So first part, memorandum of understanding, is sort of setting out the legal framework of who could go where. And once that is secured, the feasibility study would be the what is the plan and what would this potential service look like? And that would form the foundation of how we would build that over time. So that is the report on public transportation. Administration is looking to advance this issue, recognizing that it's a long-held community priority that is reflected in many previously adopted council plans. And in discussion with Parks Canada, their interest is eager to partner in this area. We look forward to you finalizing memorandum of understanding for your review and to issue that RFP so we can start to build up the plan. Deputy Mayor Waxer, I'll turn it back over to you for your questions that council has.
Any questions? Councilor Jomel.
Mr. Given, did you leave anything out?
Well, I was half out of breath by the time I finished, so I think probably not.
I appreciate the detail and the depth of that report. Thank you.
Councilor Mullen, then Councilor Lee.
Mr. Given, do we know if there's a service that's going to be offered this year at this point? Or is that still being determined?
For Councilor Mullen, through Deputy Mayor Waxer, at this time, the municipality hasn't budgeted any funds and isn't proposing to enter into any partnerships. Last year, the pilot project was really initiated by a private partner that came forward to the municipality that has not come forward this year. And so there is an expectation, there's not an expectation from administration that we'd be going forward, although there's still that possibility that would be came forward, that council would have the opportunity to consider whether or not they wanted to enter into another limited-term partnership. But at this time, no, there's nothing on the table.
Councilor Wexler.
When were we notified, I guess, that Parks Canada wasn't putting this out for RFP? Because in my mind, I thought it was happening this year. And so now it's kind of, you know, the question was, is it going to happen this year? It probably won't. When did we kind of know that it must be pushing towards us?
Well, just to be clear, Parks was on a path of doing an RFP. And in this session with them, I advanced the idea of an MOU of the municipality delivering the service. So just to be clear, this wasn't Parks pushing this to us. This was us inquiring to Parks for the moving department this way. And that was late, probably November, December of last year, when we had those initial discussions and the RFP, sorry, the MOU, sort of an early-stage one being drafted for the last little while in those discussions. So late last year is when we started having those discussions. It was municipal administration that advanced the idea of an MOU. And the reason for that is because if Parks issued an RFP, the municipality would have significantly reduced influence in the scope and service within the townsite. And the role of the municipality could be significantly constrained. Essentially, if Parks chose a private partner to come and deliver service and said stop at these stops within the townsite, the next, the the role that I can imagine municipality being asked to play would be exclusively of a funder. And so that seems to leave a lot of options off the table in terms of accessing provincial and federal grants, which are available for both capital planning and infrastructure. And so this seems to offer the widest range of opportunities to the municipality.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that. And I'm just a bit disappointed that we then didn't have this conversation sooner, because we are, in essence, going to miss out on a season. I guess the second thing is the Rome system in Vamp is that municipal-led and then partnered with Parks.
So I don't know the full details of the Rome system. My understanding is that it's an independent entity, so it's a, that is controlled by the municipality, potentially a transit commission. So it would be, make a, almost like a not-for-profit corporation or an independent corporation that is funded through a variety of means. I know that Parks Canada does provide ongoing operational funding in that case, and a few municipalities as well, not certain about its infrastructure.
So one final question. I guess my final question would be regarding the timeline of the feasibility study. So, you know, first thing that popped up was, can we get that done before the operating season this year? It doesn't sound like it. So in reality, we're not, we're not shooting for anything this year, feasibility study. So.
Yeah, that's correct, Councilor Wilson. I would imagine that this study would happen over the course of the summer. Administration would want to see that study come forward with recommendations that would help us inform the 2023 budget that we bring forward to you. So if there are any, you know, operational considerations, capital purchases, or those sort of things, we'd want to reflect that in the 2023 budget, because there isn't currently anything in the 2022 budget available to provide funding for transit, unless council makes some amendments to the budget or changes the budget. So this is intended to be that pre-work that enables us to inform the budget and make recommendations to you that you could consider in the overall context of the budget from the fall. So it would be setting the stage for 2023.
And I thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through you to Mr. Given. If you're able, I wonder whether you can distinguish what is meant in the proposed recommendation when you mention public transportation services or a public transportation system? Because it could mean a transportation system available to the public operated privately, or a transportation system publicly operated, which would be public transportation. There's a considerable difference. There's now private options accessible to the public. So there are shuttle buses that run people here and there in the park. And there are, of course, taxis, which are private, that provide service to the public. So if we issue an RFP, is it intended to encompass both of those options or one of those options or either?
Your worship, people. It really is intended to take a holistic look at non-personal automobile transportation in our area and examine the current status of service provision, which would include those privately operated but available to the public services, as well as any potential gaps or opportunities for improvements. So it really is both. Administration isn't predetermining the solution at this stage. The feasibility study would examine the current state, examine the current state of the options that are available, and highlight where there are gaps or where there are potential improvements available.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Is there a council prepared to make a motion, one or two motions? Councilor Wilson.
Wasn't ready yet.
I thought, yeah, I thought you'd check your head. Councilor Jomel.
I don't want to make any motion.
If I may, I did have a further question before the motion is made. If I may, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and again to, through you, Mr. Given. There are two proposed recommendations. Is it premature to make the second recommendation prior to finalizing a memorandum of understanding, which is supposed to come back to committee in any event? So in other words, could we make the first of those recommendations and just hold the second one, that is, the issuance of the RFP until we have the MOU confirmed with Parks Canada?
Your worship, I don't believe that there's any benefit. And in fact, I think it would be, but it would reduce our ability to be effective if we didn't get both to go forward. MOU is essentially the arrangement between Parks and municipality of, you know, where could we stop, or what are the requirements that Parks might have of us, which would help inform a feasibility study. But additionally, as I related earlier, administration expects this kind of study to take a number of months. And we would like to have results in place so that we would have something to inform the capital budget this fall. So if we delayed the start of that, that study, it's likely that we would miss the fall timeline to be able to have some recommendations to bring forward to council. So I would suggest that with the timelines to draft an RFP, post an RFP, score consultants, that we're probably, you know, that's at least a month time, at least a month time. And then we would have the consultants working over the course of the summer. It's even still a fairly compressed timeframe to be able to get recommendations from them. And so we really would request that both, the committee recommend, sorry, the committee consider both recommendations as integral moving the issue forward.
I'm satisfied. If I might, then, I would make a motion that Committee Director Administration issue an RFP for a public transportation system feasibility study, and that Committee Director Administration finalize a memorandum of understanding with Parks Canada for the provision of public transportation services and return to the future committee meeting. But I just reverse them, because I think it shows better that one is not continued from the other.
Any debate? Then I guess I'll call for approval. All of us in favor? Okay. Then we move on to 4.2, Policy Review. And back to you.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I just want to first acknowledge our Legislative Services Coordinator, Emma Pecorn, for all of her work on this request for direction. She was integral in writing up the report affecting policies. So in front of you, you see a recommendation that Committee recommend council rescind a number of policies. I'll go through and just describe briefly why each policy is available, is up for consideration of removal. But this really does stem from council's adoption of policy A001, the Policy Development Review Policy, which establishes essentially an opportunity for reviewing policies, as described in the title, but also for how a policy might be removed. I think it's fair to say that things change. And in some cases, additional legislation may come forward or other practices may come forward that might make a policy redundant or otherwise. And so one of the first steps in the policy review is identifying some of those policies which might be candidates for just completely legal. So we have four of them listed here for you. And in order, they are the Community Economic Development Fund policy, the Electronic Communications Device policy, there's no smoking zones policy, and a laptop policy. So I'll speak to them in order, and maybe I'll just pause briefly if there's any discussion on each one before we move on to the next. So the first is B017, the Community Economic Development Fund. This policy was first adopted in 2016 and is there to support a fund available for the community to apply to, for council to make allocations out of. This program has been unfunded in the budget for a number of years. There are no funds in the 2022 budget existed to be able to fund this. And so given that the, it has not been budgeted for for many years, and that there is no funds in the budget for this year, administration identified that this is one that council may wish to consider removing. But we would also know that if there was an intention or desire to restart this fund and to reallocate funds to it, council may wish to keep the policy. But as it is today, if somebody came forward and said, well, you have this policy on your website, I'd like to make an application to that fund, our answer would be, well, we don't actually have any money in the fund to be able to do anything with it. So if council wished to keep the Community Economic Development Fund, you may wish to refer that matter to the 2023 budget discussion. And if you were inclined to do that, then I'd suggest keeping the policy. But otherwise, if that is not council's desire, administration would suggest that policy could be rescinded. Pause there to ask, are there any questions on that item?
Councilor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. My question is, do you know what kind of programs this had funded in the past?
For Councilor Hall, for, through Deputy Mayor Waxer, unfortunately, I don't. I don't have that information, it kind of predates me. Some other members of administration might be aware or members of council, but I don't have information on the types of things that funded. But my understanding was that would be a pretty broad latitude for council to make allocations to individuals or not-for-profits under the broad category of improving quality of life for Jasper residents, assisting community economic enhancement or promotion of the municipality, and encouraging support for council progress. So those criteria are pretty broad. There do, since I've been here, there have been some small requests that have come from time to time, one that is top of mind for right now, because I think it's sitting, waiting for response from administration, is a request for support for community futures lemonade, lemonade thing. It's a relatively small thing, it's $500. But there isn't a existing budget line item to support that type of specific initiative, that or other things that come to the council table for small grants, essentially, or the types of things that could be funded, as I read the policy, in terms of stuff. But I don't have a list of the ones that have been funded in the past.
Councilor Jomel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I believe that in the past, some of the groups in the community, such as the rodeo, the Jasper rodeo, and the Folk Fest group have applied and receives a portion of funding from that particular source. And from my experience, I remember that some years it was heavily applied for, and then other years, there were several years in a row we didn't have any applications. So it kind of became a bit of a redundant fund. But, you know, I'm always open to exploring this. If we're not promoting it out there, then I don't think that groups or people in the community understand. And sorry, Emma, if that stuff is available out there. But I do appreciate having the opportunity to review it. Thank you.
Other questions?
Your Honor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through you to Mr. Given. Is there an opportunity currently for any similar sorts of applications to be made to the COVID Recovery Fund?
Your worship, the COVID Recovery Fund, we do have a reserve that is available. That reserve does not have a policy attached to it that guides, you know, its use, nor is there an application process. I mean, it is essentially savings accounts, in the broader sense of the word, that has funds available to council at council discretion. I think from an administrative perspective, and probably from a community perspective, the Community Economic Development Fund could be helpful if it has some additional definition to it, a defined application process, you know, a few, a little bit more, a little bit more form and rigor that would be available to the public to make it easier to understand. Again, that's, that's why administration highlighted that council wanted to consider re-establishing that fund, that maybe we keep the policy and both, you know, refer the matter to the fall budget discussion for how much money might council want to allocate to that. I could also see that there might be some additional administrative work on application process criteria guidelines that would make it much, much more straightforward for the community to understand. The COVID Recovery Reserve is available to council and could be used to fund these things. And council would probably want to have some discussion about whether that would be the best use of that fund, considering it's one of the relatively few flexible sources of capital that we have available to us.
Councilor Keller, empty.
There we go. I think in the past, we had about $10,000 in that funds that we put in. I think if I remember, we used to have a $5,000 community one as well, we hit two. And I think what was happening, the criteria was kind of crossing over, and especially the economic development one, and the applications were coming in. It was really hard for them fitting into the criteria that more is the community development one versus the economic development one. So I think that if we do go ahead, we have to really clean up the application process.
Any other questions? Should we move on then to the next policy, or would we make a motion now?
Deputy Mayor Waxer, I'm happy to go through and give council some discussions. And that way, you can choose whether you want to make one motion that goes all in, or if you have separate motions for each. So if that's okay with the committee, then I'll move on to C002, the Electronic Communications Device Policy. This is from November of 2010. This policy guided the use of cell phones for municipal employees and essentially as a, as a matter of even distracted driving. Administration is advocating that this can be removed, because it has been superseded by the Highway Safety Traffic Act, which now has penalties for these types of things, and really is the law that governs this. Additionally, in terms of safe work, municipality through occupational safety and municipality through occupational safety and workplace safety does have safe work procedures for each site, which should incorporate safe driving procedures. So administration is suggesting that rather than a council policy for this, that this can be ingrained and should be ingrained in our safe work procedures for municipal employees. And the fact that it is really governed by the Highway Safety Traffic Act again means that there is no longer need to have a council policy on this matter.
Any questions or concerns? If we can move on then.
Okay, thanks, Deputy Mayor Waxer. So the next is C003, the No Smoking Zones Policy. Again, this policy is recommended for removal as it has been superseded by the Alberta Tobacco Smoking and Vaping Reduction Act, which is an act of the provincial government. And a good example, I think, of where municipalities really took the lead with respect to regulating smoking. And I think the No Smoking Zones Policy from 2010 really took that lead in defining the areas adjacent to public facilities where smoking was not allowed. That has been superseded by the Alberta Act that does define those areas. And so there's, again, no longer a need for this municipal policy because provincial law has come in and superseded the need to have our own policy on that issue.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns? Counselor Hall.
Thank you very much. Just a very quick question. Will the signs come down, the no smoking signs at the Activity Center, if this is no longer one of our policies? And who would enforce the provincial law? Or smoking would no longer fall under our bile officers?
Well, I think first there is a difference between a municipal policy and I don't know that C003 had a fine, attached to it as a bile laws policy. With respect to enforcement, I would have to look to Minister Don. I'm not 100% certain if our bile officers could enforce the Alberta Tobacco Smoking and Vaping Reduction Act. I see Minister Don saying, yes, that could. And so we would have the ability to enforce that with respect to signage. I don't know that we would remove the signage, encouraging people not to smoke somewhere adjacent. We could update the signage to change the reference. Under what authority? There should not be smoking there. And so we could update it to say that it would be this provincial act. The other thing that I would imagine us maybe doing is that there's at least one area where we have a smoking area. A zone, you know, there's essentially a bench with an astronaut beside it that says, you know, smoking here. I think we might remove that because it seems a little bit antiquated and a little bit out of the step of the way society is going of identifying the area that should be smoking. But other than that, I think that's the only change we do to signage.
Any other questions? Okay, I think we're free to move on to the next.
Okay, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Waxer. So the final one is D005, the Laptop Computers Policy. This one again is from 2010. The policy identifies that council members should be provided with laptop computers. This is actually redundant because this expense is covered in Policy 004, Councilor Compensation of Benefits, which defines that council members should receive electronic devices for this sort of a council term. So the 005 is essentially redundant because it's covered in another policy. So Deputy Mayor Waxer, that's all of the four different policies and the reasons that administration is recommending their removal. Again, with the exception of B017, those last three at least are either superseded by provincial acts or incorporated and addressed in other policies. B17 does not address another policy. It does not relate to provincial legislation. And if council wished to retain that fund or improve that fund, then maybe you'd want to not recommend it's removal. But you might want to recommend or that you should consider budgeting for it this fall.
Any other questions or concerns? Counselor Lewis.
Sorry, the information is probably right in front of me, but for also B017, you suggested that council would have to budget for this. Is there currently any funds in that?
No, council doesn't.
And when was the last time that council committed to budget for it? It says several years. Is that correct?
But yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I hesitate to be that specific. I think that's why I put several in the report, Ben. But it has been certainly, I think, through the last term. If the fund existed, then we're moving the last term. Certainly administration could find that information and return that to us.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Is there another way a resident could apply for a grant or help from municipality if they wanted to use some kind of program or whatever they were applying for with this policy?
So Deputy Mayor Waxer for Counselor Hall, certainly from an administrative perspective, any resident is welcome to come to council with correspondence and request any sort of support. The budget is fully council budget and is open to direction from council on how you wish to use the budget. I think the, so the answer is yes, anybody can come forward at any time and request support from council. I think the sort of more nuanced answer to that is that that doesn't necessarily allow the community to understand exactly what sort of opportunities exist. And it's kind of like if you don't tell anybody that a program exists and there's no specific program, then people might not know that that option is available to them. Also, administratively, it's a bit challenging if council is receiving requests from the community and we don't have a, essentially a pot in our budget to recommend that it be funded from. Because then it comes a matter of saying, okay, well, where can we, where can we reallocate some funds from the existing budget? And sometimes that's possible because you have some capacity. Sometimes it's not possible. But in either case, it's very challenging to scrub the budget and see where you can steal some money from to fund off, even a small one. So that's why having something like the Community Economic Development Fund available might be beneficial because it would be a defined pot of money that would be for a defined purpose that we could promote out into the community. And we could potentially simplify the application process or the decision-making process. So it's more of an administrative matter. You know, if it meets these criteria, then it gets its fund, you know, it gets funding up to a certain amount. Or if it meets this criteria, it gets recommended to council for consideration of removal. So having a policy and having a policy that has some definition to it does increase the likelihood of use and simplifies it administratively if there is some dedicated funds available for that use.
Thank you for that. You might have answered my question too. When someone applied for this, who decided that they got it or who? You might not know. Who's not been here? Council decided every single time? Okay.
Counselor Malick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, and through you to Mr. Given and potentially Mr. Reed. I read the policy where it's nonprofits, groups or individuals with a goal of improving life. I have a feeling that our relationship with external groups policy, which will come up next, is probably going to cover off this particular item. And I feel quite comfortable that we can probably eliminate this policy in view that we have something following that deals with funding up to $2,000 and over $2,000.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, I'll let Mr. Reed also contribute. But I think that these could go hand in hand. The Community Economic Development Fund, if council wished to retain it, would be an example of formalized arrangement between the municipality and the group as a funder. So I don't think that it's, the 017 is replaced by, I think, the organizational consistency is enhanced by the item that Mr. Reed's bringing forward. So I think that they can work well together. I think that the relationships document that Mr. Reed is going to bring forward is really helpful at defining a whole bunch of other types of relationships that we have. One type of which, small grants might still be needed, might need additional definition as is provided in the, in B17 administrative procedures.
Counselor Reed, did you?
And you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, know I have nothing to add this time?
Any other questions? Is our council ready to make a motion then?
Yeah, I would be willing to make a motion that committee recommend council rescind the following policies. B017, Community Economic Development Fund, C002, Electronic Communications Device Policy, C003, No Smoking Zones Policy, and D005, Laptop Computers.
Any debate?
And thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I would call for division of the question to segregate the reference to Policy B017, the Community Economic Development Fund. I am otherwise in favor of the motion. But I think there may be benefits in keeping the economic, the Community Economic Development Fund. It's not just applicable to external groups. I don't think it would be covered in that policy. There have been occasions, I accept that it has been several years because of other factors that we haven't funded it, but we kept the policy. So people have, for example, come seeking under $500 to take a coaching course or a referees course, which enhance community development. And we've been open to that. They're not large amounts. But if we don't have an avenue to fund it, then we can't expect everybody to come at budget time and say, I want to take a course next spring. Could you give me some assurance now that there'll be money? So I think we're better off retaining that fund as part of the budget discussions in the fall. We can consider what might go into it. We might want to look at the, or have Mr. Given look at the administrative procedures. They are fairly extensive and I think one of the difficulties has been the reporting that we've required for relatively minor amounts. The reporting has been onerous, I think. But still, I think that government should be in a position to assist groups and individuals who wish to come forward and do something positive for the community. So I'm more inclined to keep that for the time being. But I recognize that I would vote in favor of the motion restricted to the other three.
Yeah, I'm definitely open to striking B017, Community Economic Development Fund. Would have hoped that Marilyn would have spoken up before I made the motion. Yes, so I would amend my motion to exclude B017, Community Economic Development Fund, and include the other three policies.
Any debate? Counselor Lewis.
I'm supporting that friendly amendment. I do want some type of avenue for someone or groups in the community to be able to apply for some funding based on the criteria that I understand the mayor, just to get ready to thinking.
Absolutely.
I'd be looking for pretty money in that, in that fund in the fall. That's just not how it's set up.
Shall I call the question then? All in favor? Question carried. I guess we need another. Do we need another motion?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Waxer, I wonder if there is an intention from council to at least consider the Community Economic Development Fund at the budget. Make a motion to refer that matter to the budget so that administration should have on record that council would like to see us bring some amount of money to you for your consideration in context of the overall budget so you can see and weigh that out with all the other demands that are being made.
Is our council willing to make that motion? Counselor Kelly, your end.
If I could just speak to that motion, and I speak in favor of the motion, but I would suggest that motion is to refer the matter to budget discussions. I would also think that it might be appropriate to include in a revamping of procedures, not just a fund that might be available, but an opportunity to waive fees under the same policy. So later in today's agenda, for example, we have a request from a local charitable organization to waive fees. Well, we can be as helpful to community groups by waiving fees as we can by giving money. And so I think it might be an opportunity to combine discretion that council can exercise to benefit local groups. So it might be possible to combine those in a single policy that we review in the context of budget. I'm in favor of the motion, but it could be looked at in a broader scope.
Would you be comfortable with that as an amendment?
And I don't suggest that it needs to, the motion needs to be amended. Just in some direction that when it comes back, it can be broader rather than narrower.
See, I'll get one.
Maybe, Counselor Waxer, just in terms of tracking and ensuring that council is able to have the right amount of input and influence in the details to make sure that any policy service is reflected. Administrative procedures are just that. They are sort of held by administration. I wonder if maybe we're really talking about two things. One is prefer the idea of funding the budget discussion so council can have a decision point there. And administration knows that you want to have a decision point. So that would be one motion. Maybe another motion would be committee direct administration conduct a review of the administrative procedure and present recommendations of future committee. And the reason that I said is could sort of detach the funding part from the use part. I think that there's probably a good discussion to be had at the council table of how you'd like to use this fund, what things would be in scope and out of scope, and potentially transitioning this away from an administrative procedure to a terms of reference for this fund, which would give council a bit more influence. And yeah, just would enable a special council. So I think that there might be two motions, one of referral to budget and then a direction to administration to bring forward a review of the administrative procedures for the Community Economic Development Fund.
Okay, so the first motion is okay as it is. And is there any further debate? Then I'll call the question. All in favor? And the second motion of the committee direct administration conduct review of the administrative procedures and bring back to committee. Is there anyone willing to make that motion? Your Honor. Any debate? All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. I guess we move then on to the relationship with external groups. 4.3, and I believe that might be Director Reed. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, and through to all of council, of course. The item before you is the relationship with external groups policy. And the recommendations are that council recommend, that committee recommend council rescind Policy F004, relationship between the municipality and the Jasper community team, and that committee recommend council adopt the draft municipality of Jasper's relationship with external groups policy. There are a couple of alternatives. That committee recommend council rescind the policy and adopt the draft municipality of Jasper's relationship with external groups policy with any amendments you may come up with. Apologies for the microphone issue. And and or that committee direct administration to update the draft policy with changes as suggested, and return to a future committee the whole meeting with an amended draft policy for discussion. Bit of the background, on September fourteenth, twenty twenty one, committee directed administration to bring forward recommendations on how to enhance the relationship between the municipality and local nonprofit organizations, including Jasper Community Team Society and Friends of Jasper Culture and Recreation. Administration took this direction and has developed the draft policy which would apply to all external groups, both current and future, including federal or provincial levels of government or other agencies, nonprofit organizations, private businesses, nonprofit private corporations, community groups, and individuals. The policy would come into effect when there is a financial relationship between the municipality and the external group, or the municipality supports the efforts of the external group by providing the use of physical municipal assets or labor from municipal staff. By way of discussion, administration's understanding of council's goal of enhancing and clarifying these relationships is to provide a more well-organized and effective organization-wide approach to working with and supporting external groups. The municipality recognizes that external groups make important contributions to building a well-connected, engaged, and healthy community. By defining the nature of each relationship in a clear and consistent manner, the municipality will assure transparency and accountability in its partnerships with external groups, enhancing those relationships over time. The relevant legislation in this policy would replace policy F zero four, as discussed. The strategic relevance, the main strategic relevance in the current strategic plan is is on the governance side, develop and nurture mutually beneficial relationships and partnerships at the federal, provincial, local, international level to enhance community health and address issues and opportunities. And I will mention that there are other tangentially connected elements of strategic relevance, but I didn't list those because they they would appear to have been an overreach. Financial information in this policy would not need any additional budgetary support as proposed. And the attachment is the draft policy, and I'm open to any questions.
Any questions for Director Reed? Aaron.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. I have tried to follow Schedule A. Could you just give me an example of how it might apply for example to a request for a rainbow crosswalk? How would I use this? Sample?
A rain rainbow crosswalk is an interesting choice as it's infrastructure, not specifically a typical response, but I I'll I'll give my best answer, and perhaps CEO Given will jump in if I don't get it right. But the the long and short of it is that will require a financial aspect as well as a labor aspect. And so we would call that a one-off program or event. And and possibly use of facility space, probably both. And so therefore, in that case, it is very likely that it would be more than two thousand dollars. And so it would come to council for for your approval. If the group, however, was covering all the financial aspects, and our our input was quite small, it it quite possibly would not come to council, it would be admin admin approval. So that is what we're going for here, is a simple, transparent process that people could see. Does that answer the question?
In part, yes, that's helpful, thank you. If we take it up several levels to relationships with the provincial government, for example, NSI or the local government fiscal framework, as it may soon be. The policy seems to suggest that we would need some sort of formalized relationship. But it seems to me that that is pretty much beyond our capacity to require some formalized relationship with the provincial government for funding other than what they present lots, I I just, I I'm struggling to understand how this would work on a really small scale and a very large scale.
Oh, so we have to. There'll be microphone trading here, I think this one does not work that well. So I think just on on the small scale, particularly for things that are staff labor, that would be covered under item A, so the very top line in the table. So a community organization or group is looking for a little bit of help with something on Wednesday. You know, administration will look at that, say, okay, this is an ongoing thing, are you looking for this help forever? No, we just need some help on Wednesday, okay, well, administration could approve that. Let's just make sure that we're clear about what you're expecting from us and what you're going to get from us, just so that everybody's on the same page. So I think that the, other than the non-standard crosswalks policy, which defines how those are approved in terms of the sort of relationship between the municipality and the organizers, likely we would apply the sort of line A. If there's a request for the municipality to buy the paint, then maybe we say, well, is it more than two thousand dollars worth of paint? If so, then we need formal council approval to do that. If it's a small amount that kind of can be incorporated within these municipal budgets, then administration can handle that again. Just making that distinction between the scale of the ask, I think a request for non-financial or staff labor for an ongoing purpose, there is a cost and a value to staff labor. And administration is recommending here that a one-time sort of support is kind of no big deal. We can, we can certainly manage that internally. Where there becomes an expectation that the municipality will provide free labor on an ongoing basis, well, that's delivery of a service, and certainly needs to come to council for approval. So that's the difference between A and B lines there, in terms of the financial support, again, make that distinction in terms of scale, and that's where council may have some recommendations around the amounts here, you know, we have line C as financial support, less than two thousand dollars, sort of of a one-off nature. That's that informal one that could be administratively approved or financial support over for on a one-off nature would come to council. So again, it really is about scale. And administration is intending to consider all the different types of relationships that that may come up so that we have a consistent approach. When this issue came forward to council previously, there was a desire to say, why are we, the direction from council was to expand the scope so that we weren't dealing with the Jasper Community Teams Society in isolation. Was there was a suspicion, well, there's lots of groups that really contribute to Jasper, how, what are our relationships like with all those different groups? And I think the policy is is complex because there's so many different types of relationships considered. But it does give administration a method to work by with respect to provincial or federal governments. Although we can't compel them to enter into an agreement with us, I think in just about every case where the provincial or federal governments provide funding to us, they compel us to enter into an agreement with them, so it would satisfy the conditions of, you know, this this policy anyhow. Even though it isn't us proposing to them, the agreement is them posing as a funder to us. It does meet the conditions of either a funding agreement or an MLU, you know, being in place, those would be coming the other direction. I think for administration or desires to ensure that there's documentation that supports our relationships, and that the documentation doesn't create a burden for either party when it's not necessary, and that's why there's that distinction between small requests that we can probably consider and support as long as everybody understands what their roles are, and larger requests for support where a more formalized relationship is probably required.
Council Hall.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor Waxer. Do we have funding agreements now that we put in place with our groups that we are in relationship relationships with?
We have several, certainly, as an example, Habitat, we definitely have a clear agreement with them at this time. I said clear, that agreement could be more clear in the sense that it outlines what we might think of as a lease arrangement, doesn't outline a deliverables arrangement in a funding model. And that's definitely an example where where this policy will bring some transparency. That's, it's almost like the, each of the examples are good illustration of how it might apply this policy. So Habitat does lease the municipal facility at a reduced or or waived cost, which is probably greater than two thousand dollars. And so in that case, it did receive council approval for that lease arrangement, and so this is really, we're talking about line J. So council approval, lease a lease contract or potentially funding agreement, and so, you know, it sort of checks all those boxes. This fall, through budget, council approved financial support greater than two thousand dollars, which would be line D. Yeah, which would be line D, which would require a funding agreement, and that's something that Mr. Reed has been working on, or sorry, Mr. Reed, did you see a different one?
Yeah, I would actually see that as E, because it's for ongoing, not for.
Sure, yeah, but similar sentiment, you're you're right on track. So part, so so council approval for the funding. And then by this policy would suggest that that funding should also have a funding agreement, a documented funding agreement that goes along with it. Mr. Reed has been working with Habitat on that to develop a funding agreement, but again, in the past, this hasn't been the case. Council would approve funds for an organization, and administration would send a check in many cases, and I think that there can obviously be more rigor that's applied to that, so there isn't any lack of clarity that leads to misunderstandings or misunderstandings.
Council Call of Liberty.
Just on that for external funding, as you said, we sent funds, so would the new Z fall under that, or that would be totally standalone?
So that, another good example of a of a group that would definitely fit under this policy. And we would, we would, in essence, both parties, the the intention here is both parties gain the clarity to know at the end of the day, what we said we were going to do on our side, the municipality side, was delivered, and what the organization said they were going to do is also delivered. So in in essence, what we're going for is that success metric in in all side, on both sides.
Thank you. Aaron.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. If we look at the financial support section on Schedule A, F and G speak about financial contributions to the municipality, so I take it F then might, for example, be a reference to what used to be called the federal gas tax, now it's got some other name. And so that would require only administrative approval to bring money into the municipality so long as it did not generate additional full-time equivalents, which I understand the sense of that. Under G, if it was going to increase our our labor force or full-time equivalents, then it would need council approval. For E then, financial support for ongoing activities. Can I read that to mean financial support from the municipality for ongoing activities rather than financial support to?
Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to your worship, that's exactly right, so the different word of support versus contribution was chosen consciously to delineate between times when we are giving money out or services or or facility versus times when we will get it. And there are certainly some clear examples that you've given, there are, there are some contemplated examples, we don't know exactly what a benefactor may come forward to say, I'd like to fund the dog park upgrades, say. This is all conjecture, but that benefactor may have no structure previously. And so in that case, this this grid would then give us the structure to start from.
I appreciate that, if I may continue, just one other series of questions. Under staff labor, A and B, I just want to be clear about what would be a one-off and what would be ongoing, so is an annual event ongoing? And I I'm thinking in particular of recently you were involved, and thank you very much for for being an announcer at the Canadian Rocky Staff Marathon. So they might require some staff labor for putting barricades out. In another couple of weeks, we have both the Grand Fondle and the Jasper Banff Relay coming to town, annual events, but for COVID at least. Are those ongoing, and is that something that really needs council approval to, for labor for ongoing activity, which is an annual activity? I just I wonder why that would not be administrative in nature, but maybe I'm not reading the intent directly.
Certainly, if if I may go first and allow CEO Given to catch up any any areas I may drop, but Deputy Mayor Waxer, through your worship, the intention here is is by budget year. So so we on my side of the table would see the Jasper Banff Relay support or or any of those other events you mentioned as an annual event, but it may not happen next year, and so we don't sort of plan it as a regular occurring thing. And maybe they don't request next year, and maybe they do request differently next year. So that to be, we would be, we would call that a one-off event, because in a budget year, it's only going to happen once. I don't know, CEO Given would like to.
I I raise it because I I think for those sort of recurring annual events that require perhaps some staff labor but no expense, it just seems onerous for people to put on those events in our community, have to come to council annually for approval, could council give approval once and administration just deal with the issue of putting out signs or whatever they're required to do on an annual basis?
So if if I may be more clear, your worship, that is what A is, and we would consider once a year event to fall under A, not B. You know, Uplift, we did exactly that, Uplift was brand new, Uplift said we need some barricades dropped off, we dropped those barricades off. We won't consider that next year to be a continuation of this year's support. Next year, they might ask for something completely different, or they might ask for nothing at all. And so in in your example, my answer is it already applies to A, and we would do it the least onerous way possible, and that's why we put it that way.
I understand, thank you very much.
Other questions? Council Melnick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer, through you to Mr. Given and Mr. Reed, are there any needs for defining an upper limit for what can be asked for? Would that be prudent in this particular, at this particular time since we're starting with a new policy? Perhaps suggesting ten fifteen thousand dollars is an upper limit?
Again, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to Council Melnick, I'll I'll go first and see if I get it right, and allow CEO Given to follow after me. The short answer is administratively, we would not see the need for that, because council would be approving whatever the upper limit from each quest would be. We, our operational answer is two thousand, we can clearly define that for administrative purposes, so we can move forward again in the least onerous way possible. And if you were to receive an application at twenty one hundred dollars, it's coming to you, or twenty one thousand dollars, or two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So administratively, I certainly do not see a need for an upper limit. So administratively, I certainly do not see a need for an upper limit.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, Director Reed got exactly right. I would just say that we need to make a distinction between funding programs and funding decisions, which would be completely separate. I mean, council could choose, just as we talked about with Community Economic Development Fund, to have a maximum amount that council would grant out of that policy, but it doesn't. And that is slightly different than the need to have documentation for that grant and for that, you know, for that approval, without relationship. So this policy really is focused on ensuring that there is documentation of the types of relationships that we might enter into with other parties and is less focused on, it is not a grant program that's being proposed here. This is a a framework for how we enter into relationships and how we define those relationships and what sort of clarity we can add to the relationships that we have with other parties.
Counselors DeMota.
I'd like to defer back to Counselor Melnick if you're following up on that question, because mine might not be good.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, and thank you, Counselor DeMota. And I think we may be on the same wavelength that we had four groups come to us looking for funding, one of which is legislated, that'd be the library board. The museum was coming, working for funding, a significant amount. And then we also had the daycare, which is a discretionary, it's not legislated. And then we also had the Habitat for the Arts. So I'm trying to see the definition of where this policy sits with what we have done with existing groups, given that one was some significant dollars there. And that's, I think, going to help council move forward in the future.
CEO Bena.
Yeah, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Yeah, so for Counselor Melnick, I believe that the proposal is quite flexible in that it can address any of those situations. The only one might be the daycare, which was slightly different because that's an internal municipal service. So that's like the operations department coming and making a budgetary request. I mean, you know, they wouldn't be subject to this because they're subject to all the other governance and definition that happens because they're an internal service. But for all the others, you know, if they're, the library is using a municipal space and receives ongoing regular support, it is legislated, absolutely. But just because it's legislated doesn't mean that there shouldn't be a a lease agreement in place that would say, you know, what the relationship is and and does. Actually, the library is a very good example of where many of these things do exist. The challenge is that we also have many examples of where these things don't exist. And it's the ones where the definition doesn't exist that prove to be really challenging, I think, both for the external parties and for the municipality and for council. The intent here is to provide a matrix that will allow us to say, okay, we have a relationship, what type of relationship is this? Sort of slotted in on one of those little lines, okay? So if it's that type of relationship, what sort of documentation should we have to ensure that everybody knows what that relationship looks like? So I think for each one of those examples, we could slop them in at different places of this matrix.
Counselor DeMota and then Counselor Keller-Hankey.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I appreciate the the question about a cap coming up. And, you know, again, I'm glad that there was some clarity provided between, you know, programming and and making decisions for funding. An area like the skate park, the committee group, and then actually the ongoing relationship if we're using municipal land on that. There's a, there's a lot of mesh in between those, the decision-making process. But we wouldn't want to have a cap on that, especially for matching grants or other opportunities like that. That was a good recent example. So I would, I I like the way it's 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 set out here. And, you know, it seems like you've just about thought of everything. And we're not going to get everything 100% right. But I I really do appreciate the the quality and the thought put behind this. For me, I like colors and and boxes, so it makes it easier for me to understand, even though it's it's still a little complicated.
Counselor Keller-Hankey.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through you to Mr. Reed. I'm just curious, so if I read this right, that on C, if you approve under 2,000, then it comes out of, will not be administration budgets? Anything over 2,000 would come to council for approval? And council would then have to go back to administration, see what budget, if that's correct?
Deputy Mayor Waxer through to Counselor Keller-Hankey, that's our interpretation as well.
Okay, thank you, that's great.
Mayor Island. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Apologies. I did read my agenda, but I struggled with trying to figure out how to apply this. But I agree with Counselor DeMota. This discussion has been really helpful in the unit. I'm so much better at form now. So I have only one remaining question. Does support include, say, letters of support? So if a local group wanted to nominate someone for provincial award or was applying for a grant from some other entity other than the municipality of Jasper and needed or requested a letter of support, would that fall under staff labor? A, so a one-off sort of thing? We do have a policy about letters of support. And so are we, are we mixing terms? Or is, is this clear that support under this Schedule A is different than moral support? Or whatever other support we might give to an applicant for some third-party award event?
Director Reed.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, to your worship, that is correct. This is different. And so later on today, you will be receiving a request for support, several actually. And so those do not fall under this policy. And we we developed this, and I'll speak a bit to Counselor DeMota's kind praise. Certainly, this was a team effort down down in community development. This wasn't just me hanging out one morning. Certainly, Lisa Riddell was key in in getting this wording correctly. So I'd like to tip my hat, of course, to my team. But in specifically, this policy is designed to to dovetail with existing. So we are not trying to take away, other than the one policy we're asking to rescind because it doesn't, it wouldn't apply anymore. So letters of support will still follow other applicable and other methods of support that you may find. But this in particular speaks to staff labor, financial and facilities.
Counselor Hall. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. This might just be a silly question, but why $2,000? Is that a number that's used for Jasper parity for my own?
Thank you, Counselor Waxer. Sorry, Deputy Mayor Waxer through to Counselor Hall. So that is a a number that administratively sort of aligns with what we know we can apply to or apply to a normal amount. And so by that, I mean, when we talk about the word onerous, if we go below that, council will see too many requests. But if we go above that, council won't see requests that are important or rather that are their purview. They're all important requests, let's be clear. But this line is a line that administration recognizes as this is where we see simple things that we can accommodate within our normal day-to-day. And and beyond 2,000 is a good line for where council should be privy to every one of these decisions.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, I would also, I would support what Director Reed said there. And, you know, note that council felt, well, we want to see more applications. You know, we want to see more of these things and be more involved in decision-making. Then that amount should be lower. If you want to see less of them, then that amount could be higher. The only thing that I would say is that, you know, if it was $10,000, administration would make your decisions. Well, if council isn't budgeting for $10,000 things, then it becomes a real challenge just to give back that Community Economic Development Fund. If we don't have any money set aside for that purpose, it could get to be a challenge. I think that administration is happy to, you know, to use the policy if it receives council approval and and provide feedback to you if it needs revision in the future. You know, if we, if council goes, hey, wait a minute, we're not seeing, we didn't know that we supported this thing. We say, oh, well, by the policy, we were allowed to make that decision, we did. And so we went and did it. And council might say, well, that's the type of thing we would like to see at the council. Well, no problem. You know, we can revise the policy to dial in those amounts so that the right amount of things are coming to the council. As Director Reed said, we certainly don't want to inundate council with small things that could be handled by administration. And at the same time, we don't want to have that bar so high that that council never sees anything and that our administrative budgets face a real challenge because we're always trying to say, well, gosh, we don't have any money for this thing, but we've had, you know, six $5,000 requests.
Any other questions? I'll take this moment because the Mayor Island earlier referred to in the previous discussion about providing funds for someone taking a referee course or something like that. How would, I am concerned about that type of request coming to, say, the Community Development Fund? Because my, when I was initially envisioning, I was thinking of requests for assistance in writing a funding proposal or request to to move barriers around or things like that. But I wasn't envisioning the request, for instance, to take a, for undersports to to pay for referee courses. What are your thoughts?
Deputy Mayor Waxer, thank you. I can certainly speak to it in in a general sense. That particular request to take a referee clinic is not contained in any budget that I currently have. So that request would not be met by the parameters that you've given for my department to approve. Bringing the barricades to support a marathon, that is within our purview because we have those barricades and we do road closures and those sorts of things are ours. Funding someone to go to a referee clinic, you as council would have to create the space for us to then be able to apply such a thing. And I would suggest that that wouldn't apply to this policy.
CEO Bena.
Yeah, additionally, you know, I'll use this as, go back to my reply to Counselor Melnick, that the policy is a framework for thinking about the relationships. The example that you used sort of demonstrates how there may be a connection with this policy, which is our framework for relationships and a program like the Community Economic Development Fund. So that, you know, that fund would be available for those types of small financial requests. And so by this fall, this policy would say, well, if you set up a fund like that, the Community Economic Development Fund, if there are requests for one-off events or programs, small, small funding requests under $2,000, then perhaps that could be administered. So so this framework would inform how we would develop that other policy or program. That makes sense. Again, subject to council approval, council can easily say, well, actually, for the Community Economic Development Fund, we want all applications under that fund to come to council. That's fine, but it's still, we should still have some roles at writing. If they're over a certain amount, we should have a funding agreement, like all of those principles that are contained in this matrix would still apply to that separate program that may have its own definition or or application. But again, this is relating to the principles and a matrix of the types of relationships that we may have with others. And based on the the type of relationship, what sort of approval is necessary? And what sort of documentation is necessary?
Thank you, that that satisfied my concerns. Any other questions, or Counselor DeMota?
No, prepared to, prepared to make a motion. I move that committee recommend council to rescind policy F dash zero zero four, relationship between the municipality and the Jasper community. And that committee recommend council to adopt the draft municipality of Jasper's relationship with external groups policy.
Any debate? I'll call them all in favor. Motion passed. I'm noticing the time is going by, but I'm wondering if we should stop here. Should we take a six-minute recess till 11 o'clock? Call the meeting back to order and we go then to 4.4, private home accommodation draft policy, council referral.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, this item was referred from last week's meeting. There was some discussion that the municipality needs to form a timely opinion. Since that council meeting, Parks has withdrawn this proposal. They have not given an indication of next steps. But that need for feedback by June 13th appears to have been removed. So I think it is up to council to decide what we want to do with this matter now and how we might form a municipal opinion. I think the more toward on new PHA still stands. And the fundamental issues around housing, like the change of the parks has explicitly chosen to withdraw this specific proposal. So administration doesn't have any additional information about next steps that parks may take. But as I said, I think the the context hasn't changed. And council may wish to consider that when thinking about their next steps. But in terms of this specific engagement opportunity, it has ceased to exist, although the issue hasn't ceased to exist.
Any thoughts? Counselor Wilson.
Well, publicly, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank, thank Parks Canada and the Development Office for hearing the residents of Jasper and taking a step back to reassess the topic. It's a really, really tough one to to work through. And it's going to take a little bit more time and a few more stakeholders involved in 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 the issue to come up with a proper way forward. I really think that the topic closely aligns with recent discussions we had with Parks Canada. And I'd like to keep that conversation going. PHAs, land use, very, all under land use, so there are secondary suites, et cetera, et cetera. And the Development Office currently oversees that, although I think the municipality, or I know the municipality and council as a whole are looking forward to further discussions regarding land use and planning. And I think this topic falls quite effectively amongst that. Definitely one, a little bit, there's a few things I just wanted to to touch base on. I I also want to take the opportunity publicly to thank Parks Canada on their hard work developing the accessory dwelling unit, secondary street policy and garage street policies. I commend them on the opportunities that they have now made available to the public. Unfortunately, PHAs don't need to tie to this. Unfortunately, PHAs lately have been somewhat targeted in the, sorry, in the last few years. I had to write it down because I had a lot of stuff here in front of me. But private home accommodations, before the record, didn't steal housing stock from the community. For a better part of three decades, the only opportunity for many homeowners to develop underused space in their home were PHAs. For example, an R1 house could not have a secondary suite in their basement or anywhere in their primary unit. Private home accommodations were a valid legitimate business and are a valid legitimate business for residents of Jasper. Some residents have operated them for for decades, some are just getting into that business. But they are a legitimate home maintenance business approved by the Development Office of Jasper. Once this topic came about, I had been talking with members of the community and individual Jasper Home Accommodation Association reached out to me and suggested that private home accommodations bring in close to nine million dollars in revenues to our, to our community. They are not to be villainized. These are, these are legitimate businesses that residents operate. Young families, middle-aged retired households have all made major life decisions based on PHAs being valid home-based businesses. The proposed sweeping changes that have now been pulled back regarding the PHAs that, of course, were approved by the Development Office will greatly disrupt the lives of many residents within our community. That being said, we have the privilege and opportunity as residents whom have PHAs to, to operate as nightly rentals. And so I would also take this public position here and suggested anybody, anybody who off, sorry, any PHA operators, I'd like to hopefully suggest to them that you need, we need to, we, because my, my household as well operates PHA, we need to operate within our approved business license parameters, which is nightly rentals and is not long-term. Changing purposes throughout the season to long-term is the issue that Parks Canada has regarding life safety. That is what Parks Canada is trying to curb, the life safety issues of transforming a PHA into a secondary suite. There are larger and more in-depth code compliances that a secondary suite requires. And that's been addressed in the accessory dwelling unit policy. So if you were, if you choose to operate as such, you need to abide by those appropriate code. So please, if anybody is operating a PHA and decides to operate their PHA or transition their PHA into a secondary suite, you need to know the code that you need to comply with too. And bring your suite up to that appropriate code if you're going to be operating in the long term. So I just want to take the opportunity, because we have, because I have a microphone in front of me, to, to suggest to PHA operators to operate their business as their business license states. And you're operating as, you're a legitimate home-based business and carry on with that. But if you are trying to stand on the fence and, and operate as both, I, I can't support that. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Are there other comments? Counselor D'Amore?
Well, I really appreciate Counselor Wilson's comments and, you know, for, for someone who's benefited from the opportunity and have friends and former colleagues that were able to maintain the lifestyle in Jasper and be able to afford a residency here and contribute to the community, that's been an integral component to their ability to stay, raise a young family here in the community and, and, you know, I think it's, it's a very important aspect. And I'm, I'm quite grateful that Parks Canada reconsidered their movement in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. We have referenced here this morning an important issue that is not directly part of our record, and that is our understanding that the proposed PHA amendments have been, I think the word was withdrawn. And I think that can be confirmed as of late Friday, there was a mail out. It, it just seems to me that at some point that letter ought to be added even after the fact to one of our agendas, just to confirm the fact. But on the assumption that it is even a law on the record, the state of play as of today, I share Counselor Wilson's comments of appreciation and thanks to Parks Canada for taking applause after having heard from the community. It's, it's an incredibly important step. In the initial letter of May fifth, which is on our agenda, the municipality of Jasper has been identified as a key stakeholder in the process and on the assumption that the process may be revived. This is an important issue in the community and, and Parks, to their credit, tried to address a number of issues at the same time, including the life safety issue, which is critical. But it also shows the difficulty of trying to manage conflicting polarities. On one hand, renter availability affordability, and on the other hand, homeownership availability and affordability. Really difficult balance to be struck. But we have been identified as key stakeholder and on the assumption that discussions may continue. I would be prepared at this time to make a motion that committee direct administration to report that to committee at a future community of all meeting. Options to prepare a municipal position regarding private home accommodation. We should be engaged. We were last Tuesday able to have a meeting with Parks Canada or any governmental forum. This matter was discussed at length and I think that we were able to offer some insights with respect to some of the issues, but I'm not sure that we necessarily provided a position and we should look at how we might develop that position and so we could task administration to come back with options, because there are all sorts of options that could be available through hiring consultants, but also engaging with our own public and various stakeholders. So again, my motion would simply be to direct administration to return at a future community of all meeting with a report detailing options to actually prepare a municipal position regarding PHAs, which we get then to do Parks Canada.
Any debate? Call question then, all in favor. I think with that, we can move on to five. And five point one, the Jasper Chamber of Commerce.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I don't know if we have a representative from the Chamber of Commerce in attendance online today. I think we may have. If we do, then we'll just elevate them to a panelist and into the correspondence that's on agenda. Hello? We see on the screen and it's over to you.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, council, administration for meeting with us today. I'm here, Justin Melnick, the president of the Jasper Chamber of Commerce, presenting a letter on municipal bylaw two forty-three. Please accept our letter on behalf of the membership of the Jasper Chamber of Commerce with requests that a further comprehensive review of the above noted bylaw be undertaken, considering the decision by council and mayor in late January twenty twenty-two. There are several concerns and many general ones that are seriously impacting the business community and subsequent Jasper residents because of this bylaw. As requested in this letter presented to the chamber, be included at the next meeting, which we are here now. So the summer season is upon us and while it looks promising, many of the issues surrounding the economic recovery of the pandemic still lead large. Many businesses are still recovering, they are not recovered. Puppled with the ongoing business issues such as labor shortages, housing shortages, and the need to increase wages to even begin to attract or retain employees, Jasper businesses are directly tied to the tourism industry. And of no surprise is the notion that our destination marketing organization, Tourism Jasper, invests a significant amount to bring Jasper, visitors to Jasper and Jasper National Park for businesses to be able to deliver the experience easier selling. Businesses need support in these challenging times. Some of the points in this letter have already been addressed. We addressed PHAs. Parks has already repealed their proposed changes to PHAs and we're going to be looking at that at a further time. We'll be cross-eyed off as well. Further businesses and residents want to know the scope of the bylaw. Is this the short-term plan, three to five years? Or is the community going to be tied to the rates escalating year over year? I know we've had some discussions since this letter has been sent as well with council, the mayor, as well as administration. So we have seen some clarity since the letter has come out and we're looking forward to ongoing that discussion and just increasing communication for the community as well as the business sector. We talked about the review after the fact of four billing cycles. The concern, I guess, for some businesses is that what that bill, if it doesn't change or what that will look like, is, is this what we're looking at going forward and what do those increases look like in the coming years? I'm open to taking questions if anyone has any. Thank you for your time.
Any questions?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Through you to Mr. Melnick. Thank you for the letter from the Jasper Chamber of Commerce and thank you for attending virtually today. My only question is whether you have thoughts of what a comprehensive review might look like.
So I think at times we, over the four billing cycles, the comprehensive view, I know that some groups are looking at the tiers. If there's an opportunity to change the tiers, some people have talked about changing the or, or looking at a flat rate of the consumption raised, whether the number is thirty to forty percent that we had talked about in other meetings, or just ways to create. Some businesses feel their, their business is being billed differently than others and why there's a discrepancy in those. I guess it'd be the question, which would have more clarity after a review of those four billing cycles.
Well, thank you for that. I, I'm just curious though whether you're suggesting a comprehensive review by council of the bylaw or a comprehensive review that would involve either broad community consultation or stakeholder consultation. You've used the term or the phrase twice in, in the letter, that is the comprehensive review. And I'm just trying to clarify what you have in mind when you use those words.
Oh, for sure. I think for, in a comprehensive view, we'd look at ways to make it with shareholders and, and the community and ways to make it, I guess, spread it out as best as possible. I understand the, the issue of it has to go up. It's just how, what does that look like going forward as we can't continue to move the problem with the, the assets down the road. It's just going to make the problem worse later on. It's something we have to face as a business. It's just concerning if the jump is going to be this much, is it going to be that much year over year moving forward?
Other questions? Counselor D'Amore?
I don't know if I have any questions. I really appreciate the, the chamber coming forward. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. And thank you, Mr. Melnick, for addressing council on this matter. I think there are opportunities as we go through this after, you know, the, the four billing cycles to see what our, our opportunities going forward. When we were presented with our challenges, you know, council understood that we have above three million dollars that we need to achieve to, to continue going forward and how do, how do we make that look throughout the, you know, the cycles? And, you know, it's going to be very difficult to get it right for everybody at the same time. But I think we'll have a better idea of what we can do. And maybe still, you know, reviewing this and, and understanding that when we did get our, our first review on this or when we conducted the first review on it, it was pre-pandemic. And, you know, going through two plus years of those challenges should be put into consideration at the, at the end of this. In the end, I do support council's decision and the direction that we took. I think at the end of it, we'll have a healthier understanding of what we need to do. Sorry for being repetitive. I think inputs from group agencies such as, or groups such as the chamber is important for our feedback. So thanks for coming forward.
What's that, Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer and through you to Mr. Melnick. I would like to express appreciation. Mayor Ireland, myself, Counselor Hall and Mr. Given had an opportunity to meet with council executive as well as some members in the Chamber of Commerce building and had a robust conversation about this particular issue. And I think during that time, both parties learned a little bit, appreciated where council was coming from. And I think we just want to, just want to emphasize that, you know, encouraging opportunities to think creatively, creatively about how this current system with the review after the four billing periods could be potentially tweaked, adjusted, where we find that maybe where the, where the system missed some opportunities, but that were, were potentially potentially could cause some unusual rates to be charged. I think that's, that was the key point of the, going through the high season. And of course, this ongoing communication through the next two billing periods, I think, is going to be important to hone what we will be looking at in the fall. So I appreciate that opportunity and just would encourage members of the community and business community to continue to, to take a look at how, A, they can make a, a difference in their own billing, but also suggestions that they may have that we have not thought about.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I have no further questions for Mr. Melnick on the screen. But I did want to respond to some of the questions that he has posed in his letter to council. And if necessary, I might turn to Mr. Given to, to confirm some of my points. But there, there is in about the fourth bullet point, a question, are there specific plans to demonstrate the need for the increases? I invite members of the public to take a look at our website. The twenty seventeen asset management report is on our website. Our capital plan is on the website. And they tie the connection between the state of the infrastructure and the need for work to be done and in particular, the need for reserves for pending capital work. So it may not be as obvious as you might prefer, but I think the information is there. There is also, I think, within or on the municipal website, an indication that in terms of scope, the, the capital plan, I think, forecasts utility rates till about twenty twenty-six, I think so. forecasts utility rates till about 2026, I think so. A five-year rollout is what had been proposed to bring us to what in $2017 was thought to be balanced. But of course, those things have probably already changed to some extent. And then finally, a week ago at our meeting here, and I will take this opportunity to publicly apologize. I was remiss because I forgot to mention that Councillor Hall was present at that meeting with the Chamber of Commerce as was Councillor Melnick and Mr. Given, as Councillor Melnick indicated earlier. And I forgot that Councillor Hall was there, or at least I forgot to mention that. So I apologize. In any event, at last week's meeting, we did pass a motion directing administration to put together a frequently asked question and answer document, which is not yet available, but will be available on our website in the coming weeks, which will help to address a number of the concerns that you have raised, Mr. Melnick. Better inform all of our residents about the status of utility rates and the status of our infrastructure and the connection between the need and costs. I hope that you will find all of that useful to you as well as others in the community and hopefully that will roll out fairly soon. So thank you again for your attendance and raising the issue.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions, Melnick? Thank you very much, Mr. Melnick, for your presentation.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you. So do we move then to 5.2 Jasper Employment Center?
Perhaps a motion received or confirmation would be appropriate. That way council acknowledged there's been a discussion, but council sort of formally acknowledged and admitted that you saw the letter and.
Thank you for that reminder.
I'll make that one.
Thank you. All in favor? She carries. Can we move on then to 5.2 Jasper Employment Center Letter of Endorsement Request? Director Reed?
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor Waxer and council. I will take that same sentence that CEO Given mentioned, that I believe that Ms. Marku is online, so if we could raise her to be a panelist. We have been working together to create a community-wide response and Ms. Marku and the Jasper Education Employment Center is going to lead that. So I'll hand it over without further ado, if you're there.
Yep. Thanks, Chris. Can everyone hear me?
You can hear me.
Okay, great. So, good morning Deputy Mayor Waxer and council. Today I'm seeking a letter of endorsement by council to proceed with the application for community designation under the rural renewal stream. There's been a request from business owners in the community for Jasper to apply and to become a designated community. I've met with Chris Reed last week to discuss some of the commitments our community had to have in place in order to proceed with an application and one of them being settlement services was one of the requirements of the application. So that was great. We feel like we have potentially a strong application to move forward as we meet the criteria that they're asking for. The rural renewal stream is intended to address current labor shortages and the needs in the community and to help newcomers settle into the community. The program will only benefit employers that are seeking full-time permanent employees. So they're very explicit in their application, this will not be for seasonal part-time or seasonal full-time workers. It must be for permanent workers only. If we are, and just to give you, I think, I believe I put it in my letter, we do have 151 current job postings that are full-time permanent in the community. So quite a few, quite a bit more than I actually anticipated when we did our count last week. If we're successful in the application, the community will be able to use this program to attract, recruit and retain newcomers to the community. Once designated, our center will work with employers to attract and recruit newcomers. I do want to be clear with that. It's not that the Jasper Employment Center is going to go on a worldwide recruitment effort. We do not have the capacity or the funds to be able to do that. It will be that employers will continue to do their recruitment efforts and that once they find people that fit this criteria, then we will meet with them as a community designate to discuss the full-time work and those kind of pieces. So once the suitable candidates are found, GEK will then provide a letter of endorsement to the candidate themselves. The next step in the process will be that the candidate actually applies to the Alberta Advantage Immigration Program, who will then assess the applicant's application and make a recommendation. And if they are successful in their application, they will be nominated and their application will be then forwarded to Immigration Canada for permanent residency. So it will fast-track people into the permanent residency stream. While the paperwork is awaiting, typically people would not be able to work. However, under the Alberta Immigration Program, the Advantage Immigration Program, the Alberta Government could issue a temporary work permit, which would allow these people to come to Canada and start work while they await their permanent residency. So a couple of things as far as employers. Employers, as I said, must have permanent full-time non-seasonal jobs. They must also have exhausted recruitment efforts to recruit Canadians and permanent residents locally, provincially and federally. This is actually a really important part of the process because one of the things that we have seen over the years with the attraction of temporary foreign workers is the displacement of Canadian workers. And we want to make sure that that does not happen as a result of this program. Also, employers must have welcoming workplaces, or employers, yeah, must have welcoming workplaces for workers. They must be incorporated. And it'll be the responsibility of the employment our center to verify that the applicants are in good standing, both with occupational health and safety and employment standards. So I'm not sure how much you're aware of those, but business owners that are not in good standing, their names are actually published on a site, on both those sites. And so that will be one of the determinants for issuing a letter of support to the candidate. GEK's role will also include that we ensure that Canadians are available to, if they are available to fill the position, they will be considered first. And that employers seeking permanent residency for these candidates also have suitable accommodations for them. As you are all aware, we don't have a plethora of additional accommodations. And in fact, it is one of the key barriers to people coming to Jasper. So we would want to make sure that employers have adequate housing for the people they're wanting to nominate in this program. Settlement services will play a key role in the program. So our center will collaborate and work closely with social services, settlement services to provide supports to newcomers. The one thing I did want to say is I was listening to your discussions earlier on the transit systems, that transit systems are also one of the considerations that they identify in this application, that if they're required in a community, that those things are in place. And I think it's really important for council to be aware that new immigrants and newcomers to Canada often do not ride bikes. And while we can say that Jasper is a very walkable community, if you live in the West End and you work in the East End, that is a one-hour walk one way and an hour back at the end of the day. So if they're shift workers and they work till 11 o'clock at night, that means that they're walking home late at night. They have to worry about animals or just walking home at night. So again, I just want to accentuate the importance of transit systems for workers in the community, especially when we think of our newcomers and immigrants in the community that also don't have car transportation. One of the things that we'll be responsible for as the designated community body, I guess, for this program is that we'll be responsible for fraud detection and will be responsible for reporting to the government of Alberta, any suspected fraud involvement, either endorsed candidates, employers and third-party immigration representatives. If we are approved, evaluation of the program will be conducted by the government of Alberta prior to the end of the designation period. I had put two years in my letter to council, but again, reading again this morning, I found somewhere else that it said three years. And then we would have the option of extending for an additional two years as a designated community. The other piece that I did not include in this letter and received an email this morning, if you'll see at the back of the letter when I asked for the letter of endorsement, the last bullet asks about that the Employment Center has the day-to-day focus for the area on labor attraction and retention and can be the lead partner in the application. The workplace consultant sent me an email this morning also stating that in there, we had to have something that designated GEK as the economic development entity, which I'm going to tell you upfront right now, I do not want that title nor do I want that responsibility. That is not who we are. However, we do have the economic development knowledge and understanding to be the lead partner in the application. And that would be something that I would feel comfortable having put in this letter. I was directly involved over a period of 18 months in the Economic Recovery Task Force during COVID. I'm well aware of the demands of the business community and the needs, the labor market needs certainly, and would feel comfortable with that language. And so basically, our next steps is to collect all the data that we require to submit in the application and also the letter of endorsement by the municipality. And Chris, I don't know if there's any additions that you wanted to add to this, but that in the snapshot is what we're asking.
Thanks, Ms. Marku. I will only add that the settlement services part of that, our settlement team is prepared for the obligations under this program. And also that the Immigration Coalition will be part of the support for GEK as they move forward. So from our point of view, we do feel that the community is well positioned to capitalize on this program. And as council is aware, we have received at least one request directly to council for this particular program. But I believe Ms. Marku knows there are other applicants who may be interested or other employers who may be interested.
Yes, there are definitely employers that would be interested. And also, I did want to just mention that I was also involved in the immigration strategy development for our community and am an active partner. So GEK is also very involved with settlement services with immigration partnerships.
Are there any other, are there any questions or concerns from council? Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. Just one question. I appreciate the request and certainly in favor of providing a letter of endorsement, support from council. I have simply a question about the penultimate line on the endorsement letter of support from municipal council, the terms that are required. And in particular, the name, title and contact information of the person issuing the endorsement letter. So the endorsement would be from council assigned by somebody and the person who receives a letter of endorsement wants a name. My only question is, should that be the name of somebody with some operational familiarity with the program? Or would it be sufficient? Do they just want to see that the mayor has signed the letter or somebody from council?
Yeah, they do know. They're very specific that the letter must come from mayor and council. So it would be the mayor's signature and name that would be on there.
Appreciate that. That was my only question. Thank you.
Well, I would definitely like to support that. It was because of opportunities like that that my parents were looking at the calendar.
So would someone be, are there any other questions? Would someone like to make a motion to, or council to send an endorsement letter of support?
I would like to make that motion.
Is that open-ended kind of motion okay with you? Would you like it to be drafted?
No, I think that's fine. As long as I know that the council, mayor and council supports this, I can start, I can proceed with the application. We'll wait on the letter because it has to be submitted as a package and we can move forward.
Thank you, Becky.
Council, do you know?
Does administration need a motion from committee to council for this?
Thanks Deputy Mayor Waxer. Yes, I think that this should be a motion from committee to council. The motion that you just made probably would be phrased, and I think it is, and then it says, committee recommend council.
Good. Thank you then. I'll call for approval on the motion. All those in favor. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Marku.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
You too. Then we move on then to 5.3 Appeal for Current Rent Reduction.
Director Reed received this request, but council, you know, given our discussion on the relationships with external groups, we want to be clear that that policy isn't in place yet. We also don't have the Community Economic Development Fund funded. And so in the absence of those other things actually being formalized and finished, administration has received this request for a reduction in the rental rate. It is outside of administration's discretion and authority to provide that. And we did want to ensure that council had the opportunity to consider the request. And so it's here. I don't know if Director Reed had anything else to add, but essentially the organization is looking for a reduction in order to support a fundraiser that is intended to support a changing international development effort.
Director Reed?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to all of council. I will mention that I did speak to Ms. Hart to get some more background on this item. And at this time, she's proposing that a sum roughly equal to 10% of the total profits or proceeds from these events would go to Habitat by way of making a local donation in addition to their, or, yeah, in addition to the efforts internationally. And the policy that would enable the director only enables me to right now waive $500. And so this request is basically for $1,600.
Mayor Ireland? Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. Through you to Director Reed. If council accepts the recommendation from committee made earlier today to adopt a new policy, the first of these events is not until August 9. Is it relevant whether or not the request was made? Is it relevant whether or not the request was made before the policy might be passed? What I'm suggesting, a week from now, you are likely to be in a much different position. If council approves the policy, you have discretion up to $2,000 to waive or reduce or you will have. So can you foresee any issue with respect to consideration of this request under the new policy? We can't.
The short, so Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to your worship, the short answer is no. Should the new policy be brought into law by council, we would follow the new policy, and this request could, would in fact apply under the new policy, yes.
And if I may continue, then, and I appreciate that, so that you could, as administrative personnel, make this determination. I'd be perfectly happy to make the motion myself right now under existing regulation, but under what sorts of parameters would you consider that such decisions will be made by administration, assuming that we do adopt the policy?
I thank you again, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to your worship. In essence, we would follow the guiding documents that council gives us. So strategic plan would guide how we would choose to make that decision, previous precedent set by council's choices in how to make those decisions, as well as the drivers that council has given. So for example, increased use of community facilities would influence whether or not this proposal would be approved, benefit to community members, local impact, all of that is how myself and my team would choose whether or not we would support this item. In this particular case, there are certainly, this fall fair has been well attended by our residents, there are plenty of reasons to say yes, and so given the direction that myself and my team believe community development is aligned with, we would be saying yes, to be specific. The only question mark may be that the fundraising efforts largely go out of the community, and if council saw that as a concern, then you would need to make that clear. However, the impact locally is a finite amount. The impact to residents, again, we know this is a well-attended event in the past, so my team would say that's enough to say yes. Perhaps that's enough answered.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, my question was just regarding the rates. So in 2019, they suggested it's 313. I just wanted to clarify if that was for two days or for one, so that would be, you know, either 626, so sorry, we're looking at 626 versus 831, or 313 versus 662, ever rates gone up that much over two years.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to Counsel Wilson. Excellent question. The best that I can put together, again, it wasn't here during this time, but the policy does, the current policy does allow the director to approve $500 reduction. And so if you take 313 plus 500, our rate is actually very similar to what it was in 2019, within essence, I believe, cost of living increases or those, you know, nominal increases over the years. So what I believe happened in the past is the director gave the $500 permissible rebate, and then the event paid the 313. And we, I think in this case, I could have chosen to do exactly that again, but the request was made for the entire amount, not for the 500 minimum. So in the absence of a Culture and Recreation Board where this discussion that you're having now would have occurred, it, myself and CEO Given felt it needed to come to council to have that discussion.
Any other questions? Counselor Wilson.
I just want to confirm with the administration that we're not undermined by administration by, you know, you guys have set the rates and, you know, then everybody can come to us and we can say, oh, well, that paid out, you know. So, yeah, I guess the parameters of who gets the reduced rate, who doesn't might have to set that rather than just saying this one is okay, but the next event is precedent setting.
If I make, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through to Counsel Wilson, going back to his worship's comments, it's only in essence in front of you because current policy doesn't allow for anything different. We are proposing, and it sounds as though there's good support for a new policy that would eliminate under 2,000 having to come in front of this team.
Thank you very much. I just, so just clarity from Counsel Wilson's comments. So the rate hasn't gone up by two and a half times. That 313 is already subsidized, so it only went up a tiny little bit, so, okay.
Any further questions? Is our counsel willing to make a motion?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I would make the recommendation that council have administration do the appropriate rate reduction once our policy is put in place at the next council meeting.
See you again.
Deputy Mayor, if council's, Counsel Malik's motion seems, the intent seems to be, this sounds like a good request, council's directing administration to support it, I think we could just say support it, doesn't need to be subject to. Certainly won't see as many matters like this in the future if council next week approves that, but I think it would provide the community organization some clarity about planning their event, and I think council can just be direct and say, you know, receive the request and direct administration to support the request as presented.
So the motion would then basically be to recommend to council to approve the request at the next council meeting. That would be the way I would approach the motion.
Mayor Irvin. Your motion, well, thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, your motion, so you're called Counsel Malik, but we can as committee direct administration and not put it over to the next meeting. The question I would have is, if we direct them to accede to the request, I'm not entirely sure what the request is. It is for a rent reduction, so I would ask for clarity. Are we suggesting that rent be waived or be reduced to the 2019 level, which appears to be the 313? I'm not quite sure what it is, as it's a real motion.
Counselor Malik.
As we are in a unique scenario between policy and in committee and not council, I can make the motion, I could amend the motion or restate the motion to the, I guess the best way of putting it is restating the motion, that I would make the motion that committee direct administration to reduce the current rate for each event by the amount allowed within the guidelines of $500 per event.
Mayor Irvin, not debate, and I apologize, but if we wait a week and pass the policy, might even that $300 per event have been waived. It is possible, right? It could be a question for administration. So I'm inclined to think that in these circumstances, I was to try and word a motion that I think we have to have several, whereas, because I don't want to set too many precedents, but a locally established charity that is doing beneficial work worldwide, I don't think we need the $600. I would be more inclined, if it's necessary, to let it go until we have a new policy, and if the director wants to waive up to $2,000, he's able, if we find ourselves bound by existing policies, for only a $500 reduction, then we don't think that we offer the assistance that we could.
I was looking for further comments from other counselors.
Counselor Wilson.
Well, then I'll comment. I would suggest that I would support Mayor Irvin's approach. The next fair is not till August 9, but I think a week or two could be allowed, so we could put the policy ahead of supporting this with the idea that they may be further ahead two weeks from now rather than making the decision as council.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I also agree with Mayor Irvin, it's a royal charity awaiting, and they can hit the hold free. I think that's good.
It appears that we have some consensus on council that the motion should probably be amended to extend the rent reduction to zero for this year on both of the occasions that the charity is hosting this event. And the reason I make that stipulation is that this charity may not be doing it next year, and I think, given the mayor's comments about parameters, what we're doing is we're specifically reducing the rent or making complimentary rent for this particular organization for this particular year on these two events, and that'll give some clarity to future groups who may be approaching council, and I'm very comfortable with that.
Any debate? Counselor Demora.
It's the right thing to do.
Shall I call the question? All in favor? Motion carried. I can move on then to...
Pardon my interruption. I got called into work, so I have to leave unfortunately. Thank you very much. Sorry for the interruption. I just wanted, if I can, quickly jump to number eight on the agenda, upcoming events. One thing that was missed and maybe not informed was that the Jasper Community Team Society has their AGM, and as the council member on the board, would just like to extend an invitation to the municipal council and anyone in administration that wants to come out Thursday night, this Thursday at 6:00 PM, it'll be here in chambers, complimentary, I think it was a host bar, and Joe Urie is going to be talking about his book here and referring to reconciliation, the topic of the conversation, so again, extended invitation. Let me know so that I can let our board members know if you'd love to attend it. I'd really appreciate if another council could come, let me know. We want the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. We'll move on then to 5.4, Jasper Candidate Day Committee, request for support.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, again, another request for support that might be a little bit clearer once we've got our policy finalized, but there is a bit of a nuance here. I think that historically, municipal council has provided support for candidate or for state and candidate through flipping pancakes, so the community gets to see council hard work, literally feeding the community. There is a request from the candidate committee to municipality to clarify whether council intends to provide that again this year. We'd like to, now that we're sort of at this stage in the pandemic, and I believe that within Mr. Reed's area, there are staff ready and available to help with the coordination of this. I believe we have funds within the municipal budget to be able to support this, and really the request is just one of clarity of whether council intends to support this again this year since it's been on for a few years, and whether council members are going to be to spend their time, which I think is also part of the request, but certainly administration isn't. Although we do take quite a bit of your time and try to allocate it, I'm not sure that we could commit to your, on your behalf, that you're going to be flipping pancakes. That should probably come to you. So that's what the request is, and administration, candidate committee are just looking for that some clarity of whether committee and council wish to take on this role again.
Any questions, thoughts? Counselor Keller-Hurley.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. It would be great for council to get back out there. It was a great event, something I always enjoyed in the past, and then you can do it for a couple of years during the pandemic. It was great to have people, our residents, our community all come out, and our visitors. We get a lot of visitors, and they're always so impressed that mayor and council flip pancakes. I think it's great of us.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I also support this. I am on the Jasper Candidate Day Committee and am very excited to flip pancakes. I've already booked the day and night off. Got me in.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, through you to Mr. Given. I think typically, we have had a couple thousand dollars in the budget for pancake breakfasts. Was that captured? I think we could probably find a way to do any of it, but is it already captured in our budget?
Your worship, I believe that it is. I believe that there's money available with the intention for this purpose.
If I might, and prepared to make the motion that committee recommend to council that the municipality of Jasper facilitates pancake breakfast on candidacy with funding coordination and execution, including staffing and recruiting volunteers, and that the municipality of Jasper, in addition, donate venue space, including commemoration park, multipurpose room, like the Activity Center for June 30th, July 1st and 2nd, 2022, to set up the event and tear Is there a need to donate this space that Semper Neil Park, which isn't mentioned? I'll throw it in anyways.
I'll call the question, all in favor. Motion carried. Motion carries. We move then on to the motion action list.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Waxer. A couple of adjustments to the motion action list even as a result of the discussion today committee. The first would be the second item from the top, the relationship with JCTS and the Friends of Jasper Culture Rec. I believe that that item has really been addressed by the revised relationship policy. Council initiated this item sort of on the specifics of those two individual organizations. I think they, and then administration was asked to take a bit of a broader view, more holistic view of the municipality's relationship with all different types of organizations. The policy that is going forward to council does give an indication of what sort of relationship we should have and what sort of documentation we should have. So I would suggest that this item could be deleted from the motion action list based on the item that came forward. Just see if there's a proposed adjustment. The Slitting at Sims Hill, the operations department has been busy with their summer startup. And so we're asking to be forwarded to June. Commercial use of public space item, this is both midway down on the first page. Director Nadon has received a response from Parks with respect to variance or amendments to our discretionary use permit. We've received that the level of the director of Municipal Realty Services had was not a favorable response. And so we had inquired about what other avenues of appeal were available. I believe we understand that the next avenue of appeal would be direct to the superintendent. So the administration is following up. And the appeal will make that request and we'll update council. So although on your document, we have this one crossed out, I'd suggest that it could likely stay. And we'll bring back to council the results of that appeal when we have it. The next was Jasper Food Bank. Operations team is costing that request to be, and will be coming back June. And then the other item that could be deleted would be on the second page, the Parks Canada Private Home Accommodation Grant Policy. Last week, committee received that and directed administration to do some work. And as you saw, that policy has been withdrawn and council has given some new directions to administration to identify options for how we would engage that discussion in the future. So I think that this item could be deleted because it would be replaced with the motion that was made today. So removal of the Parks Canada Private Home Accommodation Grant Policy, updating of the date on the Jasper Food Bank item, maintaining the commercial use of public space item, and removing the relationship with JCTS and Friends of Jasper Culture Rec.
Any questions?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I have two questions. The reference to the Food Bank Society, an external group making a request, to me or me offering financial, would this fall within the schedule A of the policy? We looked at earlier.
Your worship, this is exactly right. So if council will likely do that policy at the next meeting or next regular council meeting, we'll be considering it anyways. So just that administration would then take that framework and apply it. So well, is this a request for an ongoing service? It is, it appears to be. What is the cost of that ongoing support? And we would act accordingly, which may include bringing that request back with details of that if the policy suggests that it should be determined by council. So we would, upon adoption of policy, we'll start applying it in the way that we approach these decisions and which decision.
Thank you for that. I have a second question, if I may, on page two, the discretionary use permit application. You know, I just need some clarity. The indication there and the fact is that council did direct administration to investigate whether there is an appeal process. My concern is that by the time this comes back, the appeal period will have expired. So I would, at this time, if there is confirmed appeal process to the superintendent, I would be prepared to make the motion that committee direct administration to file an appeal. Because I don't want to wait and come back a week from now to find out, yes, there wasn't appeal process, so we missed it.
Your worship, through Deputy Mayor Waxer and just for Director Nadon, consequently, the work she's been doing, we don't need additional direction for council. So council gave us direction to appeal the decision. We did that at one level, didn't receive a favorable response and inquired about what other appeal mechanisms there were. Council told us to appeal, and so we entered that to be appealed using all available means until we get a final result. And so we'll do that. And then Director Nadon is on it and will submit our appeal to the avenue that I think Parks Canada identified through the website. So we don't need additional council direction. We'll continue to follow direction previously given. I don't know if Director Nadon had any other updates other than that, but that is underway.
Counselor Wilson?
With regards to that, just out of interest, is there an actual appeal process set out on the development, Parks Canada Development page website? Or is that correspondence through the development office?
Mayor Waxer, Counselor Wilson, it is a formal appeal process. It is outlined on the Parks website. So I was simply directed to the appropriate information. And essentially, the superintendent has authority to hear those appeals and their decision is final, is what the information on the website shows. I'm happy to forward that link. It is public information. I was simply directed to it by local Parks Canada staff.
Okay. I wonder if we take that emotion to accept the motion action list with the articulated changes. Counselor Hall? All in favor? Motion carries. Counselor Reports? Counselor Keller-Hurley?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Last week, I attended a two-day session of Evergreen, a strategic planning board meeting. We're going ahead with Victor Lake, the sub-terminating this fall. Pine Valley, we we made a motion to go ahead and get the design plans in place. And we have approved that to go ahead and that should PRF should go in the fall. And we've brought in some new health initiative programs for all the Evergreen that will be senior housing that will take place over the next couple of months. And the Pine Valley Lodge that has 100 new, 100 more new units. And we're into phase five. The other units are open and that should be completed in early June. And it will be open to restaurants and a bar on site. So all residents and all visitors are open.
Thank you. Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will be attending tomorrow the Summer Staff Club event. That's going to be held at the tramway. As I'm going to be representing the library. It runs from 2:00 till 8:00. And I think anyone's welcome. It's designed for brand new staff in town to learn about all the different activities we have. I would assume that will be some outreach tapes. Mayor, Dr. Reed?
If I may, just to add color, Deputy Mayor Waxer and Counselor Hall. So that event is in fact open to newcomers to the community and anyone who is curious. So you might have been here for five years, but maybe you've never been on the tram or you've never known about outreach services or you've never come for a swim at the pool or you've never done any number of things. And so we do want especially newcomers to recognize that they are welcome there. But so are those who are curious about learning more about our community. And so I just wanted to say you're absolutely on the right track, Counselor Hall, and to keep up the good work.
Thank you, Dr. Reed.
Counselor Keller-Hurley?
Is there transportation in place to take the staff to and from?
90% certain there is, Counselor Keller-Hurley. Deputy Mayor Waxer, thank you. I'm, I just can't remember exactly what the schedule is, but I'm certain there's transportation to take people out to. And I should maybe give more information. There are going to be, there is a scavenger hunt idea set up. There are many booths that you will see at that event, including the Education and Employment Center as an example. Earlier, our guest, Ms. Mark Crew, will be there or her staff will be. So many, many employers, larger employers, but many, many community groups will be there. Museum's going to be there. The Habitat will be there, things like that. The library will be there and all of our outreach services will be available. Our recreational culture offerings. So yes, there is plenty to see and there is definitely transportation. I just don't know the schedule.
I can clarify the schedule as I'm reading it. So let's see if that's correct. And you might have some intel on this. Tim Horton, is that 2:15, 4:15 kind of throughout the afternoon?
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Wilson.
I wanted to be Councilor Melnick for this one. Councilor Melnick, and I attended Jasper Housing, JCT, Jasper Minority Housing Corporation meeting last Thursday. We had Colliers in attendance and Colliers gave us a great presentation on the JCT Governance Review, which we made a motion to bring to council. So we'll be seeing that in the near future. As well, we did a motion to return some investment, sorry, invested money from local businesses who had put money forth for housing project that had seen the light of day. So we didn't feel like we should be sitting on that money until we have a real way forward. So those funds were or will be to be returned. And the governance review, I think will come June, next seven months.
Counselor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. So next week, the 31st and 1st, I'll be away in Edmonton along with Mr. Given at the Travel Industry Association of Alberta. We happen to have a opportunity for a advocacy, tourism advocacy summit with a number of speakers that will include, I best say maybe the current interim leader of the UCP, potentially Mrs. Naughtley and other members of the government. So we'll have an opportunity to get up close and personal and speak with some of the ministers in the government. Mr. Vasanol, I believe, is also from the federal government going to be speaking, which would be great. And following that, I'll have the pleasure of attending with Deputy Mayor Waxer, our Sister City Association, Japanese Alberta Sister City Association Conference in Tabor, Alberta.
Thank you. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I can report that last Wednesday I met with Stuart Back and I think his title is Vice President of Jasper Lamp Collection Pursuit. He was in town. We discussed primarily the ongoing utility rates issue. But there is also some interest in whether Jasper might be interested in airport expansion in Belmont. And I spoke to him and I spoke to Curie Jasper about that. And I've been invited now by the mayor of Belmont to have a chat with him about potential expansion of the Belmont Airport. So I will carry on with that. Last Wednesday as well, I attended the Arts and Culture Community Conversation. Yourself was there, Counselor Waxer, as was Mr. Reed. The most important outcome was to pursue an initiative to try and find some collaborative space for entrepreneurs who need just a place to set up their laptop and internet access and do some business. And so whether that can be coordinated with existing commercial space might be the best and quickest option. And it might be a road to get legitimacy and eligible residency status for some people who are critical components of the community but don't have commercial space and don't otherwise qualify. So a very healthy discussion and that is being pursued by others. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with representative of Trans Mountain Pipelines and the Sint First Nation discussing the impact that those groups are having on residential housing availability and affordability in Jasper. So this is an issue that was raised some time ago and I had an opportunity to speak with the chief of the Sint First Nation, who offered to get me in touch with the representatives from Trans Mountain. It's taken a little while to put it together, but that is happening tomorrow. And tomorrow as well, Mr. Given and I will be attending the Jasper Partnership Initiative. And I can't say off the top of my head what's on the agenda, but there's always lots of stuff on that agenda. So all of that coming up tomorrow. And that is my report. Oh, and I can report additionally that I should know by later today whether my travel plans for July 1st have evaporated, which means they will be around for graduations on candidate day. But if you're still interested in graduations, you might do that. But they'll work hard to bump me off, thank you, Spock.
If there be, if there be no further reports, I think we move on then to upcoming events with the addition of the JCTS' AGM brought up by Counselor Demora. Is there anything else that people would like to add to that upcoming events? Then I wonder if we, do we need a motion to accept that for information? Then we move, can I have a motion from a councillor to move into in camera? But I thought prior to that, we needed to determine if there's anything likely to come up after the, after the in-camera event. If not, we have a motion.
No, Deputy Mayor Waxer, there are just two items. Some discussion at CEO in terms of comments feedback. And then council, continuation of council's strategic process. Neither of which would have any agenda items coming out. They would be items that would come to future councils.
That being so, would someone like to move that we move into camera? Thank you, Counselor Keller-Hurley. All in favor? Thank you for listening and we'll proceed into the next part of the agenda. Thank you.